Meeting to order, can I have roll call please be?
Mr. Delafort?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence Sandy?
Here.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mr. DeNaro?
Here.
Mr. Bellotti?
Here. All right, first order of business tonight would be the pledge. Can we all stand and do pledge please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we did roll call already, right? So we did roll call already, I just kind of moved that, okay. Next order of business tonight, acceptance of the minutes from February 27th, 2024. Everybody had a chance to review?
Yes.
Any changes, revisions?
Nothing.
Okay, then could I have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Motion to accept.
Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
I'm so moved.
All right, I think what I'm going to do, we're going to switch things up a little bit on the agenda. The adjourned public hearing, I think I'm going to move to the back of the agenda after the discussion. I think that's going to take a little more discussion than the others, so to be fair to the other applicants, we're going to jump in to the next one, and then we'll come back to the adjourned public hearing. So, the next item up on the agenda with the public hearing, appeal number 247814, area variance, Dominic Quintoni, if I said that right, seeking an area variance section 24037 of district regulations in an R40 zoning district where 25 feet to the side yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 15 feet eight inches for a new addition, thus requesting a variance of nine feet four inches. The property is located at 39 Vandewater Drive on .88 acres and is identified as tax grid number 625904796275 in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
I'm so moved.
Good evening.
Name please.
Sure, Michael Berta, architect for the applicant.
Gotcha. Now you're getting ready there.
Technical difficulties right now.
Sure, we were all at the house on Saturday, right? We got to look, see exactly what's going on. Thank you for flagging things so we could get a pretty good idea, you know, of what you got going on there.
Yeah, you're welcome, yeah, it just, it just shows how originally not conforming and how a lot already is.
Gotcha. And yeah, just for the board's sake and any folks maybe listening in, just a brief description of what you need or why you need it.
What we're looking for is, we're looking to add a, an addition to the front of the house, which is currently sitting inside the existing, the setback requirement. The houses are pre-existing non-conforming, the setback actually goes pretty much right through the property line. Give me one second, I'll bring it up. So as you can see, the setback line is, it starts at about a third of the way back on the house, and as it just gets smaller. As you can see, the setback goes about a half to about two-thirds of the way back on the existing side of the house, and then goes on an angle straight up, you know, following the property line, as you can see. So the majority of the addition also is in the required setback. The front, though, is not, so we're only looking for a side yard variance.
Right, gotcha. Yeah, I mean, it's property's, property's shape, I guess I should say a lot of shape, you know, a little difficult.
It's a, it's a odd shape, it's a pie-shaped odd lot, and I have to assume that when the house was built many years ago, that it was a, the setback was either 15 or it could have been 20 feet at the time.
And your idea of the cul-de-sac as well, this way John's taking over your plans. The addition basically lining up at the existing side of the house now, correct?
Correct.
It's not going beyond that.
No, we're lining up at the side of the house, and we're going out, you know, nine feet, which is a small amount. They just need, it's a one-story ranch house, large family, they need a little bit more living space.
Gotcha.
In the living room off the kitchen, so when they have gatherings, they have enough room to move around.
Gotcha. You guys, any other questions, you guys? I mean, we're out there pretty straightforward, just staked it out, could see what's got going on, but, you know, again, a lot makes it somewhat difficult to do what you need to do. You have a question, you guys?
So basically, the addition is just going to be living room?
Yeah.
Okay. Just so you have enough room for the kitchen dining room?
I'm sorry?
So you have enough room for the kitchen dining room?
Yeah, because you can see that we're opening everything up a little bit there.
Okay, yep, see that? Okay.
During the course of construction, are you going to be rebuilding the existing kitchen? Are you basically gutting the existing house?
Yeah, we're going to be redoing the kitchen, a new kitchen, yes.
I mean, it seems like you're doing a significant, you know, addition off the back, and if you're reconfiguring the entire inside of the house anyways, I mean, have you guys looked at other options to extend out the other way? I mean, it seems like the staircase is a factor, but if that's the only item in the way.
Well, it's not just the staircase that's in the way, I mean, you have all the kitchen plumbing, all the plumbing is in the back of the house already, so to relocate the kitchen to another spot, it's redoing all the plumbing, and then we're going to have issues with pitch on the septic.
I mean, you're adding like three bathrooms, I mean, there's going to be significant plumbing work.
They're all down, they're all in a separate area that's going to actually have to go into a pump chamber. They're going to have to go into a pump to move them to get to the septic. So, you know, the thought is, is to keep the kitchen in the back, you know, as the kids are playing in the backyard and they're in the kitchen, they can actually see what they're doing. So relocating the kitchen to another spot or pushing the kitchen further out is not really too much of an option, because the septic is also right behind the house.
Yeah, I mean, it's the living room we're talking about there, right? I mean, do you look into options to relocate that living room? I mean, you have additional living rooms downstairs?
Yeah, we looked at it as well, I mean, we looked at a lot of options given, you know, where the house is and what they're doing. Obviously, going to the, going to the side of it, the driveway side is not an option, as well as...
There's no way to go the opposite direction, right? Opposite the garage?
Correct, because if you, if you look, that also then, sorry. So if we had gone the other direction, that's where the existing bedrooms are, so we would have been reconfiguring the entire floor plan.
Okay, which it sounds like you're doing, right?
Well, we're really not. All we're doing on the, on that one main level is we're removing a bedroom to create a hallway to get into the back. And so other than that, it's really staying the same. The kitchen's staying where it is, the dining room, the living room is just staying where it is, we're just increasing the size of it to a little bit more space and also to create more of a formal entry. Because we're, you know, right now you open the door up and you walk right into the living room. And part of what we're doing is we're creating a low partition, so that when you walk in, you're actually sectioned off from the living room, so it gives it a little bit more definition.
Are you well and septic there? Are you well, right?
I'm sorry?
Are you well and septic?
Well and septic. Yeah, if you remember from the site visit, the front of the house, the concrete blocks out of there, that's the well.
Yeah.
And then the septic is, the tank is right about the middle of the house, out on the basement, on the lower level, and then the fields go out and then kind of shoot to the right.
Gotcha.
And I believe you said that no changes are planned for the septic, right? The assumption is that the existing septic is going to be sufficient?
Yeah, we're keeping the existing bedrooms, the bedroom count the way it is.
I mean, Barbara, for that, are there any questions? I mean, some of those rooms in the, in the lower level, they're labeled as, they're bedroom size, but not labeled as such.
And they just were given names like gathering room and office. It looks like upstairs, something that was a bedroom, you're just now calling it a TV room?
Yeah, but we're pulling, we're going to probably wind up opening walls up, so it's opened up as well. May not reflect it on there, but we're, we're actually going to be pulling that open, so...
So the wall into the hallway will be gone?
Correct. You know, we're going to make sure that it can't be used as a bedroom.
Where is the mother's bedroom going to be? You said they're bringing their parents in?
I'm not sure. I could find that out.
It looks like they're making a huge master bedroom for themselves.
Right, and then there's a, one of the, there's a smaller bedroom for their, one of their sons, their son is going to be closer to them because he's, he has a development challenge.
Right, and so is the parent's going downstairs in this office sitting room, lower foyer playroom thing?
They'll be going somewhere, I just don't know where.
All right, so I see the wet bar there, it just can't be a kitchen.
It will not be, and again, we talked last month about making it into, putting on the C.L. that it cannot be used as an apartment.
Right, but it can't be a kitchen either.
Right, it will not be a kitchen.
Okay, because we will then look at your new construction plans if this is approved.
Yeah, it will not be a kitchen.
I think we talked about that on Saturday, too.
We did, two meetings ago, too.
Yeah, and on Saturday we discussed it.
It's not going to be an apartment, they're not, they're not looking for an apartment, they're not looking, they just, the house was a good deal when they bought it, and it just needs to be gone.
No, and the thing is, in this town, they can have an apartment for their parents, so I don't want to make it like we're being hard that they can't.
No, no, no.
Because it's a family situation, I'd be more than happy to discuss an accessory apartment application to them, and if that wet bar is truly going to be a small kitchen for them. They just don't want it to go in without the proper...
The way we're planning on the house is there's no separation, so if there was going to be an apartment there, they'd have to walk through it to get to their other living area. So it's, they're not looking for it to be an apartment.
Do you know if there's any capacity in the, in the septic system?
I'm sorry?
Is there any capacity left, or are you kind of maxing out with the current number of bedrooms?
Well, I mean, the way that everything is designed, there's always going to be over capacity, but we're maxed out by the health department on a number of bedrooms.
I'm just thinking, like, if you go to sell this, you know, someone's going to take those rooms downstairs and probably call them bedrooms. I mean, it's a concern that, you know, if someone using this house in a different way would kind of immediately have an issue.
Their, their plan is to stay there until the kids are out of college, so, you know, they're looking at 15, 18 years before they go anywhere. I can't guarantee and say what anybody's going to do two years from now, but I can, all I can tell you is what their use is going to be, and it's not going to be used as, as that.
Okay, well, I mean, it seems like there might be some issues on enforcement, and I guess that don't really concern us, but...
Correct.
Well, we do have to go through the building department to satisfy their requirements.
If it's a, it's a four-bedroom now, so as long as they're not changing the bedroom count legally, it doesn't even go to the health department. So he's calling, if he takes the wall out for that sitting room, I have to plan hold it now, and then once it's an office, we really don't have any...
Yeah, so as long as you call everything an office, you're good.
Well, the other thing, two room bedrooms.
And they can sell it, and somebody may use it as a six-bedroom, but we can't do anything about that.
We're not, we're not providing egress in some of the other, in some of the rooms, so it couldn't be used legally as a bedroom, even if we wanted to. That's, that's one other way we're doing it, so...
Is there egress for all the rooms downstairs?
Well, yeah, because they're walkouts.
Okay.
Yeah, but the office that's downstairs, that doesn't have a, it doesn't meet the requirements for a bedroom.
Okay.
So that's all the, one other way we're doing it, so it can't be used as a bedroom.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions for this applicant? Further questions, then could I have a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Have a second? Have a second?
Second.
On favor? So moved, and I have a motion to grant or deny the applicant the variance. I'll make a motion to grant the applicant the variance. I don't believe the benefit can be achieved by any other feasible means. It's not going to create any undesirable change to the neighborhood or nearby properties. The request is somewhat substantial, however, not enough for me to deny the application. There will be no adverse effects on the neighborhood, and the alleged difficulty is self-created. However, though, I would still vote in favor of the application. Can I have a second?
One second.
Roll call please be.
Mr. Delafort?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Sandy?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Uh, no.
I know. Mr. DeNaro?
Yes.
Mr. Bellotti?
Yes. Yes, your, your application has been granted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your time and your effort on the application.
Thank you, too, for the time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda, appeal number 27, I'm sorry, 247815, area variance. Daria Gray, estate, seeking an area variance section 24037 of district regulations in an R20 zoning district where 40 feet to the rear yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 22.6 feet for the legalization of a 9.1 foot by 22.2 foot shed, thus requesting a variance of 17.4 feet. The property is located at 811 Wheeler Hill Road on .80 acres and is identified as tax grid number 605704681095 in the town of Wappinger. Have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Hello there.
Hi.
So I'm guessing you're speaking on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, I'm R.C. Wagman on Old Choy Road, and Hope Gray is on the phone.
Gotcha. Well, we, we were all at the house on Saturday, took a good look around, see what you got going on over there. I, if you, were you, are you able to give a brief description of what you need and why you need it?
Well, there's a shed that's been there since the property was bought by the applicant's sister, she's closing the estate, and it's 22.6 feet from the rear property line, and they need 40 feet, but the shed's been there for probably 35 years, 40 years? Or 34 years, excuse me.
Gotcha. Gotcha, like I said, we were at the house and took a good look around, see what you got going on there. How the shed has been there for quite some time. Barbara, there's no grandfather in this, and anything like that?
No, the code came in in 63, so it would only be accessory structures before 63.
Gotcha.
I mean, I think with the topography on the site, it does make sense, the location she chose, I basically, behind the shed, it does drop off significantly to the surrounding properties, which I think helps the case. Over the weekend, we had talked to her about the possibility that any variance we grant would be just for this shed, if it has to be replaced, the replaced shed would have to meet current zoning. Is she comfortable with that? I don't know if she can hear me or not.
I don't know, can you hear that? So they said if they granted a variance, it would just be for the current structure that was ever replaced, that the new structure would have to conform to the current code. Would you be okay with that?
No, we said we wish the shed as is and given the garbage shed.
Well, yeah, well, we would, we could potentially allow that, but then if that shed fell down, dissolved into nothingness, the new shed...
The one took it away.
Which I think is actually possible.
I know.
The new shed would need to meet the current zoning.
Right, so any variance would only be specific to this particular structure, that if any replacement shed came in, would have to conform to the new code, their current code.
Right, and there's no plans to replace or do anything, simply asking that the shed remain as is where it is.
Correct.
But we would, you could tell her that we would have to condition it.
Right, so the condition on the variance would, would be that specific, that the variance would only be for this current structure, there could be no replacement structure put in in that exact same site. She's up there.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any questions, guys? Pretty straightforward, right?
Yeah, we saw it, saw everything we need to see on Saturday.
Okay.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Just sir, please tap into the microphone, name and address, please.
South Vity, 38 Old State Road, my property adjoins it, it's the existing shed, it's fine. We have no...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out. All right, any other further questions? I have a motion, please, to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Have a second?
Second.
On favor? Have a roll call please be.
We have to...
I'll get ahead of myself. I have a motion, please, to grant or deny the applicant the variance.
I'll make a motion to grant the variance. The benefit, it could potentially be achieved by other means, but I think it would be undue hardship, there's no undesirable change to the neighborhood, the request is substantial, no adverse physical or environmental effect, and the difficulty is self-created. And I would condition it that this variance is only for the current structure, if the structure is replaced in its entirety, it would need to meet current zoning.
All right, can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call please be.
Mr. Delafort?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Sandy?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. DeNaro?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the variance has been granted. You're welcome.
We heard that.
Have a good night. All right, next up on the agenda, appeal number 247816, area variance. Sam Kuznetz and Alana Jacoby, I think, seeking an area variance section 24037 of district regulations in R10 zoning district where 25 feet to the front yard property line is required, the applicant can provide seven foot eight and a quarter for a 575 square foot addition to include two office spaces, lounge, and bathroom, thus requesting a variance of 17 feet five and three quarters inches. The property is located at 10 Liberty Street on .3 acres and is identified as tax grid number 605609014563, excuse me, in the town of Wappinger. Hello there.
Hi, how are you?
Your name, please.
My pastries around?
Yep.
My name is Justin Tager, I'm an architect, I'm representing my client, Sam Kuznetz and Alana Jacoby. I'm going to be here tonight.
They, they own 10 Liberty Street, and it used to be a Methodist church in Chelsea, beautiful old building. They closed on the property, they moved in in, I believe it was February 2020. Septic was redone, and it was designed in 2017, totally redone in the backyard, and it was designed to handle two bedrooms. Again, it's a church, so the old sanctuary space, for example, is a very large great room, beautiful great room. They have a growing family, they just had their first child, they have a bedroom upstairs, and like a common area where the baby's right now, and a bathroom. Building is relatively close to the street, similar to the post office across the street. And with discussions with client, contractor, walking around the building several times and trying to figure out where to place this office addition, and a lounge and a bathroom, they basically want, wanted more private space off of the more public spaces of the, you know, it's a residence, but there are public and private spaces of a residence, so they wanted to maintain the great room. They have sort of a dining area where the altar was, of course, there's an entry, the original building was built in 1833, and I think it was the first building in Chelsea, according to the owner, and addition on the front was put on in 1896, which is, you enter the building and there's a stair that leads up. There is a bathroom on the first floor, but they wanted this separate area where, when they're having gatherings, kids can stay in the lounge, there's a bathroom there for people to use, they have two bathrooms, and they wanted office space, they're currently using what's noted as a studio office on the first floor, but they want those offices to be more private as well. So that existing studio office on the first floor, they want to be more of like a formal dining room, which makes sense, and based on the way the house is laid out right now. There's a belfry, it is active, some really interesting aspects of this building, and our design, we've tried to keep relatively small, it's 18 by 34 total, it's about 575 square feet. We're calling it the Two Lanterns Project, because we did these sort of two hip roof designs over the spaces with these little cupolas, and the cupolas would sort of light up like lanterns at night. And the roofs over those cupolas resemble the roof over the belfry. So if you look at the elevations, which...
Here, you can just clearly see on the site plot, let me...
Sir? Sir?
Yeah.
You have to, yeah, you have to either pick up the microphone or stay at that microphone, thank you, that's all I was trying to tell you. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. With the site plan, you can see this color coordinated, so this tan area is the existing building, and the green is the proposed addition. So try to clearly identify where that is, you can see the front yard setback line here, and how much it's projecting into the front yard. In the back, there's a deck, the septic's in the back, there's a fire escape slash steel stair on the south side. So really kind of hemmed in as to where we're going with this, but upon all the discussions that we did have, we thought that this was the best area between the building and driveway, it's on the side that the firehouse is on. And, you know, when you're across the street here at the parking lot where the post office is, it's a clear view of what we consider to be a beautiful addition. And I'll take this down, so you can see some of the elevations, and you can see the sort of overall size, scale, and proportion, you have this little interesting roof over the entrance, we've taken the idea of the Gothic arch windows and replicated them here with the hip roofs and the cupolas, and then the side elevation you can see here, as you can see, it's aligned with the windows, and then we have this little section here where the bathroom is, it has like a low sloping roof, and these two roofs, like, sort of pop. So it's, it's a, we consider it kind of a gem of an addition, onto, you know, being respectful of the existing building.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an ambitious project, and it, you know, it's kind of neat, you know?
Yeah.
And the addition really blends in nicely, I think.
We think so. Yeah. We've had several design revisions to get to this point, so, yeah, it's been a bit of a process, but it's, it's gotten to the right point where everybody seems to be pretty happy about it.
Yeah, I can see why you're kind of stuck in that location, it seems like anywhere else you'd be blocking the back windows, which I imagine you don't want to do.
Yeah, there's, there's the rear windows where the deck is and the access out to the deck, we didn't want to get anywhere close to the septic that's in the backyard, around the other side, there's, there's some rock, there's a walkway, there's a steel stair going up, or, you know, emergency egress. So we just thought, and not only that, but it kind of seems to want the addition there, that's what we thought, as we were going around the whole thing, we just thought, this is the place where the addition needs to go.
Yeah, it seems to balance the facade nicely.
Yeah. And you come down the stairs from the second floor, and as you get to the bottom of the stairs, you're able to go into this, too, so it's very easy access, when they wake up in the morning, come down, have their coffee, they go into their offices, they're private, and everything else is open.
And then basically, the setback, too, to the front, I mean, it's no further, closer to the road, actually?
Yeah, we're not making it any worse than it already is, we held it back a little bit.
Right, exactly.
In fact, it's a little better.
Yeah.
Not by much, but it's a little better.
Right. Got it. Any other questions, you guys?
No.
No.
What we generally do is, as a site visit...
Yeah.
And we like to do that here, of course, it wouldn't be this Saturday, but the following Saturday...
Okay.
Which would be the 23rd of March already, so...
Okay.
Right, so we'll probably be there around nine o'clock in the morning...
Okay.
On the 23rd, it would be great if you could maybe just maybe put pins in the corner of the addition.
Sure.
And if you can identify that property line in the front, it would be great.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah. And then, and then that would be it, I think, for the site visit.
Okay.
So, so we'll be there, well, schedule your public hearing for that following Tuesday, which would be the 26th...
Great.
Okay, of March. So we'll schedule your public hearing for the 26th. Site visit will be the 23rd.
Perfect.
At nine o'clock.
All right. Thank you very much.
Other than that, you're free to go.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's mine, thank you.
I'm going to make sure I see B, please.
All right, going back now. Next up on the agenda, okay, would be adjourned public hearing. Appeal number 737810, area variance. Pedro Pintado seeking an area variance section 24037 of district regulations in an R80 zoning district where no accessory structure is allowed over 800 square feet in a one acre zoning district. The applicant has added to a pre-existing barn sized 30 by 20.5 with an additional 20.5 by 30, excuse me, square foot addition with a roof overhang close to the property line. The original barn was 621 square feet. Now the structure is 1,242 square feet, thus requesting an area, I'm sorry, thus requesting a variance of 442 square feet to allow the 30 foot by 20.7 foot addition to remain. The measurements do not include the roof overhang on either side. Where 40 feet to the side yard left property line is required, the applicant can provide zero feet for the overhang on the original barn structure, thus requesting a variance of 40 feet for a roof overhang on an existing barn to remain. Where 40 feet to the side yard left property line is required, the applicant can provide 7.5 feet for the original barn structure, thus requesting a variance of 32.5 square feet to, I'm sorry, to allow existing building, building built around 1972 to remain. Where 40 feet to the side yard left property line is required, the applicant can provide six feet, thus requesting a variance of 34 feet to allow for a new addition to remain. Where 40 feet to the side yard left property line is required, the applicant can provide two feet for the shed, thus requesting a variance of 38 feet to allow for a four foot overhang to remain. The property is located at 136 Stony Kill Road on 1.00 acres and is identified as tax grid number 605602897684 in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion, please, to open the adjourned public hearing?
I'll make a motion to reopen the adjourned public hearing.
Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So move. I'm going to take a quick break. I just want to get a glass of water. There was a lot of rain.
That was a mouthful.
I'll be right back.
I need a tissue.
Take a break, go ahead. It's a good time.
Get over, I want to get out of here. I didn't use it.
Okay. All right, so needless, we got a lot going on over there, right?
I'm sure. Took the words out of my mouth.
Yeah, there's a, there's a mouthful, right? I'll say. Everybody's been out to take a look at it. I snuck in there last Saturday. It was kind of early on Saturday mornings. I didn't want to knock on your door, you know? But I took a peek around. So needless to say, yeah, we got, got a lot going on. When you guys have that, that plot plan?
The what?
The plot plan, the survey. Yeah, I didn't, couldn't put my hand on it. There we go. We got it, thanks. All right, so we got an existing and we got new. Right?
So I think last time we talked about what, what could be removed easily. I know we talked about the seven and a half foot extension that kind of goes over the property line, that overhang coming off.
Certainly all the overhangs and that awning extension.
So the awning and all the other overhangs would be pulled in to match the existing buildings' overhangs?
We would be happy to, to remove that.
Yeah, it's going to be a question because you are undoubtedly, and we absolutely, I guess if you're going to remove it, I guess it doesn't matter. I was just going to ask if we're absolutely certain that it was still on Mr. Pintado's property.
But I think that seven and a half foot is over, looking at the survey.
Certainly on the line.
But there will be coming down anyway.
Right. All right, I see what you have.
Yeah.
So according to the survey, nothing, nothing encroaches onto the neighboring parcel, but it's, it's uncomfortably close. And I think we're in agreement that it certainly could be trimmed back to about the normal foot match the existing barn. That was what was discussed when we were out there a few Saturdays ago.
The, the new portion of the barn has a significant opening in the middle. Is that going to have a door on it at some point?
Two sliding doors, like barn, barn style doors.
Good, and then the question too, I mean, just, you know, walking around observing, you know, it would appear that, that this is being used as part of Mr. Pintado's business. Now, is, is that the case or is that not the case?
So Mr. Pintado does not have a business. He, he's just an employee of a business.
Okay.
But that business is in NIAC, so he does store, he's an electrician.
Yes.
He does store things in the existing barn, so he doesn't have to drive to NIAC ever. Because, you know, every job is in NIAC, right? And so he pretty much works remotely from, from his home, but it's not his business. He's not a principal in the business. He's, he's just an hourly employee.
Got it, understood. Also that, you know, the property is somewhat cluttered?
Hence the, the addition.
Right, gotcha.
So, you know, for, to me, and I had said this on the Saturday that we all met out there, that that addition is so that his lawn doesn't look like there's a yard sale every day. And the barn, the addition to the barn can, really difficult to see from the road. None of the neighbors complained, but the, all the items scattered on the lawn certainly is visible. So to me, it seems reasonable that this is probably the easiest pill to swallow.
Right, it just could have been a better vocation. And, and understood that adjacent property, I believe, is state property, right? Like 200 plus acres or something.
I don't know.
So it's New York State Education Department.
Right.
We had discussed that, I think.
Right, right, you know, checked it out on GIS too, and, you know, it's a pretty large parcel.
But there's a lot of debris around there.
Well, yeah.
So...
That's clutter, right?
And we had discussed that with David, that he would, it was embarrassing to have that conversation, but, but he would make every effort to, to clean it and restore it back to no debris whatsoever. And we'd have no issue with that being a condition of approval.
If we were to move forward with this, we would stipulate that.
And I think that's, that's well in line with, with, you know, we're asking a lot, it's, it's fine.
The other thing that came up was a curb cut. One of them would have to be removed.
So...
So you can't have two driveways? And the one that probably was existing is very large on the road? And then I think in one of the discussions, he even said that he put this other gravel one in to be able to get to the garages or barns or whatever. So he can't have them both. So he has to choose. He either has to scarify the ones to the right where I, I observe some trucks or get rid of the one to the barns.
So they're asking you to decide between the parking immediately off the road and give up the gravel driveway to the barn or keep the, keep the driveway to the barn and give up parking on the road?
I, I, I need to keep the, where is the, the...
Okay. So he'll keep the front paved and, and...
So then anytime I go by, I don't want to see a driveway with gravel. I want to see grass.
Grass.
It's going to get destroyed, so that's going to be a problem going forward.
So what he says is just to be out, I put grass on the...
Okay.
Hey, do we have a maximum width of the curbs that are allowed? Or is this being grandfathered in?
Well, the other one looks like it's been there for a really long time. I think it's, looks like cement or, I didn't really look asphalt.
Yeah, it's like four or five cars wide. I mean, it's a parking lot.
Right, which is very unusual as a, at a residential property. It's more, you'd see that at a business, so...
Well, that is the driveway, where they park.
Yeah.
It doesn't go in.
Yeah. Maybe you just pull one car in and you stop.
Right, he just can't have a whole driveway. Can't have two of them. He has to...
Right. Well, it sounds like he's the smaller of the two is the one he's going to do away with.
I mean, would you consider keeping the smaller? Because it sounds like you are going to be using it inherently.
So it doesn't get used daily. It's, it's very limited use and to restore it so that it's mowable grass will still allow once in a great while passage. So I think that, that's better than for him to rip up the asphalt and walk a greater distance in the snow and rain into the house. The proximity of where he's parking out is a couple steps either in the side door. Once upon a time, I looked at it, that the gravel driveway probably was the original driveway to home, but where you pull in and there was a garage there, that is now, over the years, evolved into expanded living space. And that's probably how that, the paved car holding area came to be.
Because I thought you did have an entry on both sides of the house, no? Is it on the other one side?
It's all, the other, it's, it's, I mean, we walked it. It's more grass than gravel. It's, it's very limited use. He, you know, how often do you drive in that?
I don't know, just a different style.
How often?
How do I open it, by?
Once or twice a week.
That's a hard, you're asking him to answer you. He doesn't know.
Oh, but he would know better than me.
I know, but every week is different.
Yeah, it all depends on what he has to do that day or that week.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't want to answer for him.
No, I understand.
He has the most accurate answer. We want to be truthful.
Now, I mean, at the end of the day, the only thing that really matters is one's got to go, one's got to stay, right?
For sure. But if it was high traffic, you know, there would be no grass growing there, right? And there's considerable grass growing there.
Right, okay. So you've decided you're going to keep the larger of the two, basically? Okay. Any other questions, you guys?
So the overhang, you're going to, you're going to match the existing of the original?
Yes, yes, sir. So that's about 12 inches.
Yeah, about a foot.
So it's a big, a considerable change from what's there now.
Yes, right?
Yes.
Yes, all this would come off.
And that side awning on the west side, gone.
Right. So you, you would be removing all, all of this?
I don't want to shake my head.
Yes.
Where, where it steps out?
Absolutely. So this is, this is not on the, on the rock side? This is the, is the backside that we're talking about?
Okay, so this side you would keep. But the other side is essentially the same.
If you're saying, if you're saying that needs to be gone too, then, then...
That's not this.
Well, no, on the other side. Yeah, there's just not a photo that shows, so it goes together.
Where the property line is, the stone wall.
Right, it's going to, it's going to match the, the original.
Yes.
This will be cut back to...
Right.
The original, it's over here somewhere.
Yeah.
And it was all that awning that came out with the two holes gone.
Yeah.
Now you see that the other side can remain there.
Okay.
Okay, so obviously I wouldn't go in there.
And on the opposite side...
What we talked about, Tom.
Yeah, if, if he decides to extend on the opposite side and, for example, come down with posts, then that is an enclosed structure, correct?
So, so we're telling you right now, that is never been discussed. It's not in the plans.
Okay.
We'll even tell you that we don't, we're not going to do that.
Okay.
What are you putting on the ground on that side where you're going to put big sliding doors? Are you going to put concrete, a deck?
Maybe gravel, just as a, as a gravel walkway, four or five foot wide. The rest will stay long.
Anything else, guys? Tom? Good? Tom, good?
Yes.
As long as they're going to clean up.
Yeah, yeah, we will go through that. Anybody in the audience have any questions, concerns about this application? Okay, so there are none. So then at this point, then I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
So move. All right, then. Now, Barbara, quite a number of variances, right? Yeah, we got to handle them one at a time?
You don't have to because it looks like you're going to deny some of them for the overhangs, so...
Gotcha.
Or, or maybe we would voluntarily delete those requests for a variance regarding the overhang, so they're, they're not an issue to be voted on. But, you know, we'll voluntarily say, we're going to pull that back.
Do I, how, how would we formalize that?
We have to redo this. It would be easier to just, let's just move forward.
Yes. We've come this far, no turning back now.
Appreciate the effort. Great, well, yeah, we'll do that. All right, so moving forward then, did I have a motion, please, to grant or deny the applicant the different variances? Again, we have to address them one at a time.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we, we're going to grant the variance one at a time?
Yes.
Okay, so...
So the first one is the size. We don't have to read them out. The first one is the size of the structure. Will you allow it to stay at 1,242 square feet?
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to say that we should grant the variance, number one, for the size. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood and will not produce a substantial detriment to the nearby properties. There is no feasible means of, available to achieve the benefit other than to remove, remove the size. The requested variance is substantial, but due to the fact that it's in a location in that it is, basically unseen from any other position and state land on one side where the, the intrusion, you know, where it's most, sticks out the most, let's put it that way, is, is probably a good thing for that. And it will not have an adverse impact on the physical, environmental conditions. And the alleged difficulty is self-created, but I'll, I'll say that we should grant variance number one.
Do, do we want to vote on them individually? Okay, then I can have a second.
I'll second.
Roll call, B.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, no.
No.
All right, I'll vote yes. I vote yes. And that, that's for the variance on the square foot only.
Okay.
All right, proceed, Tom.
Okay, so the next one is where 40 feet to the property, variance number two, where 40 feet to the side property line is required, the applicant can provide zero square feet, thus requesting a 40-foot variance to allow a roof overhang for an existing barn. And I'm going to deny that variance in its form as it is.
Okay, the applicant has agreed to have that removed.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Let's finish the, just finish it. Someone has to second it.
A second?
All right, roll call, please, B.
Is it Delacore?
No.
Well, I think we have to vote yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes to deny. Sorry.
Sorry.
Yes to deny.
Yes, no.
Is it Lauren?
Yes.
Is it Sabah?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and just to clarify that, yes to deny.
Yes is deny, yes.
All right, Tom. All right, Tom.
Okay, that's variance number three we're going on, right?
Yes.
Yes.
variance number three, similar, 40 feet, where 40 feet to the side property line is required, the applicant can provide seven and a half feet for the original barn, thus requesting 32.5 square feet for the building to remain, to allow the existing building built around 1972, 1970 to remain. And this, this variance, I'm going to grant it. That's me. Do we need to go through each single step?
No, no, just someone second and it just...
All right, can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, B.
Is it a call?
Yes.
Is it a bar?
Yes.
Is it a bar?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that was yes to grant. Okay. All right, Tom, you're gaining on.
Variance number four, where 40 feet to the side property line is required, six feet for a new building addition with a 34-foot variance for the new addition to remain. I'm going to grant that variance with the stipulation of the overhang.
Agreed.
Second?
Yeah, second roll call, please, B.
John, second.
Is it a call?
Yes.
Is it a bar?
Yes.
Is it a bar?
No.
Is it a bar?
Yes.
Is it a bar?
Yes. Again, that's yes to grant that variance.
Yes to grant. Okay, so that one's been granted.
Yep. We got one more.
And the variance number five, where 40 feet to the side property line is required, the applicant provide two feet to the side property line, I assume, thus requesting 38-foot variance to allow a four-foot overhang to remain. This one here, I think we're going to deny this one.
So that's that awning that, with the two stilts that were on the rock wall and we'll voluntarily remove that.
Because of that, right. This is, so that one is gonna be denied.
Correct.
Did, did we condition anything though? Like, oh, we were gonna condition the garbage, right?
Not yet. Not yet.
We didn't get there yet.
So, yeah, I guess before we finish...
And if that was part of one of these.
It's kind of part of it as a whole.
You could add the conditions at the end since you went separate.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we, let's get a second on this.
Second.
All right, can I roll call B?
Is it a call?
Yes to deny?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it a bar?
Yes.
Is it a bar?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes to deny. Okay, now the, the variances that were granted, okay, the stipulation is gonna be actually twofold, right? One is you have to eliminate one of the driveways, or one, I'm sorry, one of the curb cuts.
Three.
One of the curb cuts. And you have picked the smaller of the two, okay? That'd be you. Also, we're gonna stipulate that the property needs to be cleaned up and put in an orderly fashion. We're gonna give you 30 days to do that, okay? And we'll have an inspection in 30 days. All right?
Who does that inspection?
And, and the overhang being cut back.
Yeah, so it'll be 30 days from today.
Oh, right, never mind, never mind.
Yeah, I wanted to just...
It's 30 days from today. I don't know if I'll be there, but inspector from our office, it will be calendared tomorrow morning. So 30 days from today, there'll be an inspection that all the rubbish and whatever else is around the yard.
For, for the cleanup. The overhang, I would request a little more time because while it was a beautiful day today, March is still coming in like a lion, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
So you have, you have like two or three months to do that, but the rubbish needs to be cleaned up before all the grass and barns start growing.
We're happy to take that.
Okay. All right, so all that said, I think we got it.
I think we're done, right?
I think we, we closed it. We tied all this up in a bow and we're good to go. You guys are free to go.
Your variance is granted.
And your variances, some of them have been granted, some denied. All right? Have a good night.
We appreciate your patience and...
Sure. We appreciate yours. Thank you.
Yeah, we did.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, we didn't do that. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. We are adjourned.
Thank you.